Of the May 28th, 2024 School Board meeting to order. Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Director Hume.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Felton.
Here.
Claflin.
Here.
Lala Burdi.
Here.
T. Felton.
Here.
And Chair Rasha is absent, that's six present.
Thank you. May please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To get us started, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda for this evening as well as the work session and regular meeting minutes from April 22nd and the work session minutes from May 13th. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have an agenda, thank you. So we'll start tonight with some great examples of quality in action. I'm so thrilled to see so many people in attendance tonight. The activities and sports that our students are able to participate in add so much to their education here in South St. Paul. I'm glad that we get to honor all the participants from our spring and winter activities. Would Athletic Director Brady Kruger like to introduce our students?
Yes, I'll get that going. Again, thank you for inviting us to come back. Thank you, Dr. Zambrino, School Board, Middle School and High School Administration for their continued support of Packer Athletics and Activities. With the, we're going to be recognizing both our winter and spring activities seasons here today. And with the amount of people that we have, I will cut my speech short today and I will just bring up our track and field coach, Manuel Sprigle, who will be talking about both our boys and girls track and field programs to get us started. Thank you.
Looks like he just learned he was talking or something.
Hey, everyone. We've got a big track family here and they're all just coming, scooting around. I'll stay over here. But these are some great representatives of our school district and our school and they're all great in so many different ways. Track is a super busy, busy thing. And these guys are all there, they all have different events they do and they all represent our school, all places we go to from, you know, becoming a pilot and pole vaulting to having 40 times that matched their GPAs, to being conference champs, to be, you know, again, same thing for Jackson, those guys, they're all just wonderful representatives. They're respectful, they're kind, they talk to people from all over different schools. Lots of people, lots of adults go into making a track meet work and these guys are there and it would be, it would be a really cool thing to see. They're not just physical specimens, and they are, but they're also just super kind, great people that would be a really hard group to follow. So I'm really glad to be here and having these guys. This is Isaac Burke, fantastic, Scarlett Johansson, Grace and Annie Sprigle, Brooke Vine, Glory Johansson, Jackson Ken Schultz, Ben Thron, who's getting a haircut, so look at that because it looks good right now, and our unofficial team captain Jake Bald. So boys and girls track.
All right, I should make note that we are in the middle of section season for our spring activities, so we have, baseball had an obligation, softball just finished up their season, they unfortunately just lost Apple Valley earlier today, so they are not going to be able to be here. But moving on, I'm going to bring up Seal McDonald and speech.
Good evening, we're grateful to be here with you tonight. I have two of my three seniors with me, Lila Roach and Deanna Usueta Lucio. They, we had a third senior as well and I was so pleased with them. We had three people advance to the section finals this year and Lila advanced to the state tournament. It had been several years since we had someone qualify for state. So it was awesome and she's going to be around next year, can help with the team too, so I'm really excited about that as well. So anyway, Vince, here we are. So.
All right, next I'm going to bring up one of our affinity groups, our CDLU group led by Daisy Quinca and Bridget Contreras to talk about all the wonderful things they have done this year.
Hello, I'm Rihanna. I'm part of the CDLU group at South St. Paul, which stands for Community of Latins United. It's a group that we have at our squad, comunidad de latinos unidos, that's how you say it in Spanish. It helps us celebrate our culture and share with you guys some of our culture by the events. We have here Samantha, Bridget, Ivan, and I'll let them introduce themselves, I'm not going to do all the talking tonight, I promise.
Okay, my name is Daisy, I am the representative of CDLU, comunidad de latinos unidos. This year in September, we started out with a little festival on one of the soccer games. We had flags and different activities and then we also celebrate the Hispanic Heritage Month with a different spirit week, every day we had something fun to do. Then we also went to Capoja and Lincoln Center to read and we did this with BPO. We did have pictures for you guys, but we can't show them. In October, we did Dia de los Muertos. It was pretty fun and a lot of, a lot of students have learned more and more about this, this day. It's not just Halloween. We also had a tournament in November, volleyball, where some of the teachers and admin participated. It was pretty fun, the kids were very happy they won. And then BPO and CDLU went to Feed My Starving Children. We had a lot of fun. They packed 68, I mean 62 boxes and that was for 13,392 meals. And then in February, we also celebrated with BPO and we went to Capoja and Lincoln Center to read. We also in March did the Multicultural Day, which it was pretty fun, next year you should come. And a lot of students did bring out their culture and they did bring out some food too, it was pretty good. In May, we celebrated and we closed out with May, the Cinco de Mayo. It was a big event and we hope that whoever was there enjoyed it. Thank you.
All right, next up, I'm going to bring up Coach Isaac Douglas and our girls basketball program.
Hi, how's it going? So yeah, I'm Isaac Douglas, I'm our head girls basketball coach. This season was another great season in the right direction and how we're progressing. We won our most games now, which we won 10 games last year, we won 11 games now this year, which is the most in the last 11, 11 years, excuse me. And then we won seven conference games as well, which is the most we've won in the last 12 years. So a lot of really good things happening right now. And who I have with me are two of our three captains, Gloria and Scarlett Johansson, and that we're missing Ava Waska tonight, she wasn't able to make it unfortunately. But I just want to give a big shout out to them as a lot of, all this progress that we're seeing and the positive impact is on them and what they're doing with our girls. So thanks to them and thank you for having us.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up, I'm going to bring up Amy McAvoy to talk about our SAD program.
Thank you. I'm Amy and my co-advisor for SAD, which is Students Against Destructive Decisions, is Joquan Williams, a middle school social worker. And we this year have about 55 students. Joquan and I took over as co-advisors in October from Lindsay Alejandrino. And so it's a learning thing for us. It's been great though. This year, we had a committee of senior board members, we met one Thursday a month and then carried out with our all-member meeting the Thursday after. SAD was not, South St. Paul SAD was not previously registered as a local chapter, so we put that, us co-advisors put that to the students who agreed they wanted to be linked to the National Chapter of SAD, which was free. We were able to do that and with that comes some structure and resources that we are implementing for our current and upcoming school year. This gives us the structure of empower, engage, and mobilize. So our purpose will be really defined by those three verbs, empowering our students to get out there with national contest scholarships and learning opportunities, leadership opportunities all the way into Washington DC. Engaging, so as students this year want to get out and be part of our Capoja Days, our On the Road Again, and the Great Halloween Get Together and be out there communicating about decisions that students can make even at a young age. So there's a lot of really great ideas that these students are actually putting into action currently. Mock Car Crash was rescheduled unfortunately and then the dance was rescheduled as well. But those things are things that we're looking at bringing back next year. And change of structure will be, instead of senior board leaders only, we'll be having class chairs paired up with our senior chairs to each have a part of that empowering, engaging, and mobilizing. Thank you.
Mr. Holson could not be here tonight, he is working the spring middle school show choir show that's going on at the school. So, but he did have a couple of students that were going to come speak on behalf of theater, so theater's up next.
Thank you, Mr. Kruger, Superintendent Zambrino, and the School Board for having us here tonight. We've had a really successful winter and spring season for South St. Paul Secondary School Theater with our Winter One Act Play Festival and our Spring High School Plays and our Middle School Plays as well.
The 68-plus students on the cast and crew of the Winter One Act Plays learned a lot as they produced six short plays. We had four student-written, student-directed skits, our middle school one-act play and our competition play. In addition to the great experiences our actors and technicians got with this productions, it was also a great leadership opportunity for our 10 student directors. Shakespeare's Dead Dames, our competition play, broke new grounds for our theater program as we were fortunate enough to be able to advance to section finals this year for the first time in a very long time.
Our Spring High School Plays, we actually produced two longer one-acts this year for our Spring High School Play, The Relent Factor Hound and The Thirty-Nine Steps. The 42 and up actors, technicians in this play got experience working with dialects, tackling the dense dialogue and plot of a Tom Stoker play and making the frantic comedic pace of the Thirty-Nine Steps run smoothly. Our audience got to see a really funny doubleheader of British murder mystery spoofs and our double-cast actors in this production had a great experience learning from each other during this production.
This year, our middle schoolers took on a super fun and challenging play in Puffs. This is a spoof of the entire Harry Potter series told from the point of view of the story's lesser-known characters at a certain school of magic.
The 45 and more members of the stories, of the cast and crew worked hard to develop their characters, works, work with accents, and manage the hundreds of technical and entrance cues that the show involves. This play also features leadership opportunities for our student assistant director, choreographer Lily Rosengren, set designer Grace Klinzki, and lighting designer props master Bellamauer.
We'd like to thank the School Board, the South St. Paul community, and the South St. Paul staff and administration for their, for their ongoing support of the important, life-changing work that we do in our theater program. Our South St. Paul theater family has worked really hard, learned a lot, and had a lot of fun over this past year, and we look forward to continuing this tradition in years to come. Thank you.
I know who we're hiring if we need a voiceover, right? Like, wow.
I know, they do a fantastic job. Next up, Mr. Conrad Anderson and our Debate Knowledge Bowl programs.
Good evening, I'm going to start with my debate team here, so yeah, back off, guys. So we're two different activities. With me, I have Alex Brundick and Deanna Usueta Lucio and they're two, we only had two seniors on our, our debate team this year. You might have recognized them if you were at the Activities Banquet. These are both the male and female activities honorees this year for all the work that they do and all the various programs that we have. Debate is an interesting activity because we, I get kids to come after school that just want to learn more. And we debate two debate topics every year and they can, if you want to debate them at any time, they're very well versed this year on whether or not we should decriminalize drugs and whether or not we should break up big tech companies. And so I want to thank them for their leadership. We have a very young team and they were just amazing to work with and they're, I have them in class as well and they're just absolutely fantastic students. So thank you, Deanna and Alex. I'm going to have my Knowledge Bowl team come up. I have with me Logan Lamott, Jamison Hammond, and Cooper Meyer. We, and then we also have a fourth member of their team, we have a couple of different teams, but, so you debate with four, or you, I got Debate Knowledge Bowl just mixed up now. You compete with four, four members on your team. And so they have a fourth member named Leighton Gosman as well. And they're all juniors and they had an amazing season. They placed in two out of the three meets that we had, they took second place in subregions and they finished in the top 10 at the region meet, top five go-to-state, so that's our, kind of, we're shooting for next year. But it's good that we have them all back and the amount of knowledge that these students have is absolutely amazing. I have them all in my third hour and I know they're laughing because they know that they're supposed to be listening to me and I see them working on Knowledge Bowl stuff, but I don't even interrupt them, like if you're learning, that's fine. So, so anyway, it's, I'm just so impressed with this group of students and, and we're competing against, there's not a triple-A, double-A, single-A, like we, all the big schools and we are, we're neck and neck with all of them, so they're very impressive, so thank you guys.
All right, with Cooper just being up there, hold on Cooper. I'm going to bring boys tennis up, Coach Jesse Rock to talk about boys tennis, but it just speaks to one of the wonderful things about South St. Paul is the, all of the opportunities that our kids can be involved in and they're involved in multiple different things, so it's actually a really cool, special thing about this, about this school.
Two others back there, just casually hanging out, see them on the TV, it's all good. Hi, guys, my name is Jesse Rock. With me, I have Cooper Meyer, Zach Bellumbi, and Trenton Smith. And we, I am the varsity tennis coach for the boys team. I also co-coach with Nina Rieselman and we had a tremendous season, just recently, last week, just a huge shout out to Cooper and Zach who went to the second day in individual sections as a doubles team and placed fourth, which I mean, it's like, really good for, like we haven't done that in a long time, so I just really huge shout out to them. We had just a good season, new players were coming out this year and then also just the attitudes they brought to the court every single day. I mean, every single day, we learned a lot, we grew, and we also had an incredible time doing it. So we just had a great season and we wrapped it up last week and yeah, ready to play more tennis this summer, so.
That's great.
Do you guys want to say? Good.
Thanks, guys. Next up, girls golf and our head coach Josh Palmquist.
All right, good evening, thank you for taking some time to listen to us tonight. Today, we had our section tournament, day one today, and that's why I don't have any of my girls here with me, they're still drying up, I think, from all the rain this morning. The kind of spring we've had, a lot of rain, some wind, and a little bit of sunshine. But we had three girls advance to day two on Thursday, which is very cool. We're in a section that is, at a lot of schools that are known for their golf, so to have three individuals make it to day two is quite the accomplishment. And one thing I wanted to do is shout out for, she's behind me, Jean Watry. I know she's retiring this year after 40 years here, but she's also been a JV coach for the last 14 years. And she really encouraged me to become the coach last spring. So thank you, Jean, for encouraging me to take this leap, so, and again, thank you guys.
All right, next up, we got a two-for-one. We'll bring up Mr. Dave Palmquist, who will talk about our boys golf team and as well as our girls hockey program.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Zambrino and the School Board for having us tonight, really appreciate it. I asked my kids how I keep my lock on my phone, sure it doesn't turn off here, but I haven't figured out that technology. I'll be really quick, but a night like this always reminds me of what amazing kids we have in South St. Paul. I always tell people, we got great kids. It's amazing to see over the years. Our hockey team, I think, not even so much what we did on the ice, I'm so proud of them, but we just had great leadership. Annie Felton and Eva Beck, Molly Jeffrey, Bailey Vesper and Lilly Pockel, just outstanding leadership that created a great culture for our program once again this year. Makes such a big difference as a coach to have that type of leadership in the locker room and, and then what they did in the classroom, I think our GPA for our team was over a 3.7 cumulative GPA for our entire hockey team. I've always told people, over the years, I've never had to worry about an academic issue with our hockey team ever because these kids really work hard in the classroom, so I'm super, super proud of them. And then, by the way, we did have a good hockey season, we ended up losing to the top-ranked team in the state by one goal, four to three, to get back to the state tournament, so super proud of, of our girls and their efforts and look forward to getting back there next year. Our golf team, like Josh had his girls today, we have our boys section playoffs tomorrow at River Oaks, hope to see everybody out at the golf course tomorrow, if you can get out of school. But our golf team is led by Ray Rosales and Jack McClellan, two kids that I've coached for a long time. I've had Ray since sixth, seventh grade. He made the state tournament as a sophomore, so it's fun to see them as seniors now and see what they can do these next couple of days. We were pretty low in numbers with golf through the COVID years, but with a little hard work, we, we got a bunch of junior high kids these last few years, we had over 21 that are enthusiastically golfing almost every day. It's really been fun to see that, the excitement in that, and that makes me happy as you look forward to the future with boys golf. And again, thank you so much for having us and appreciate all the work that you do. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to stick with a common theme here. I'm going to bring up my boys hockey coach, who is a first-year coach, and in his first year, he won't tell you this, but I will, he was actually named the 4A Section Coach of the Year, so that's a pretty impressive honor in your first year, and that is Zach Palmquist.
Thank you, Brady, and thank you, School Board, for having us tonight. One thing I will say, and I think a lot of first-year coaches can say this, is that you, you know, you step into a role like this and you want it to all go smoothly and I think, for the most part, I did and I attribute that to all the players and the coaches and the staff behind me that helped me kind of move things in the right direction this, this year. We had a tremendous amount of hard work and a lot of great listeners on this squad and I couldn't have asked for a better year in that regard. As far as our season, we, we went nine, 17, and one on the year, more than doubled our wins from the previous year. We had four all-conference honorable mention players, two all-conference players. We were the number six seed in the section and knocked off the number three seed in the first round of sections and battled the number two seed to get to the section final, which, which was a really big thing for this program. I think we were the highest seed to make it to the next, next round in sections in the whole state, so I'm just really proud of the leadership led by Ray Rosales, Jack McClellan, and Brody Shepherd this year, seniors that we're going to miss, but they moved the needle to, to another level and I'm looking forward to seeing where that's going to be next year. Thank you.
All right, next I'm going to bring up Coach Don Nyhart to talk about our boys wrestling program, and then he's just going to introduce our girls wrestling program as well.
All right, thank you, members of the board, Dr. Zambrino, for inviting us back. It's always a privilege to share a bit about our student athletes. We were very fortunate to have a large group of boys on our team this year. Talking just about our boys team, we had 52 participants in the varsity or JV or B squad level. Our boys ended up finishing with a 24 and four record, a varsity record. We ended up having four boys earn all-conference and two honorable mention. We had seven athletes earn academic all-section this year, which was a good number. We had two section champs and we had seven boys state participants. The team ended up finishing as section runner-ups and earned team academic all-state with a 3.56, which was gold as far as the Coaches Association standard team GPA. Behind me, we have Tomas Ochaki, Nate Birchtoole, Shane Schwab, Andrew Schwab. I'm going to mention just a few of their accomplishments. We had, as far as all-conference wrestlers, Shane, Andrew, Nate, and then Andrew Bonk, who is not here, he might be playing baseball, I don't know if they ended up, did they get to play? They did not get to play, okay. And then state participants, Ty Birchtoole, Tomas Ochaki, Cinco Vukas, Andrew Schwab, Nate Birchtoole, Andrew Bonk, and King Thompson. Our academic all-section individuals were Ty, Tomas, Andrew, Derek, Alex, and Andrew. And Andrew Bonk ended up being third-team academic all-state, so good accomplishments there. We lose a great senior class this year, but we've got an awesome group of underclassmen coming back. We can't wait to get them on the mat this summer and get them back in the room next year. I'm going to just introduce our head girls coaches. This is our third year that the State High School League has sanctioned girls wrestling in a girl state tournament. It's my first year being able to hand off the reins to somebody else and not run both programs, so we were lucky to have Coach Tuttle and Coach Radis. Coach Tuttle came in from Portland, Oregon, taught out there for 27 years in faith as a recent graduate from Oxford College where she was an All-American just a year ago and is bringing her skills to our high school girls team, so.
So Coach Tuttle and I were chosen to head coach together, kind of like an arranged marriage, we had never met. But we were a great team. Coach Nyhart did a great job of getting a scrappy room of girls ready to wrestle and we showed up and we had one of the biggest rosters in the state, really, at the beginning of the sport. I'm going to talk about the team highlights a little bit. We go to a tournament at the end of December called the By State and there are 66 teams there and our girls kind of put the upper part of the country on notice, we got second, we had three champs. You know, the home team won, there might have been a little home cooking with the draws and they kind of took that momentum and gained that confidence and we competed all year. We, our team was always on the podium, we had lots of individual championships. We took that into the postseason and as a coach, our girls wrestled their very best in the postseason, which is what you want. We had, we took eight girls to our section tournament, seven of them placed, five of them qualified for state. We had two champs, we had three state placers and those are all probably program highs. And most importantly, there's not a gym we didn't go into to where we were just constantly giving compliments, not only about how tough and mean our girls were, but about how they noticed how tight they were as a family and you couldn't pry them away from each other and how our area was cleaned up and how they were nice kids. So it was a really great season and it's a really young team.
Hi, good afternoon. I would like to highlight some of these girls. We got Zoe Radis, she had 26 varsity wins this year and is a state placer. We got Vivian Diaz, 36 varsity wins and she's currently a captain and she is a section champ as well and a state placer. We got Haley Jackson, a state placer with 25 varsity wins. I think this year for the Minnesota State High School League for the girls wrestling, I think that joined this year were 1,400, so it was bigger than last year, so it's still a growing sport, but we're getting up there.
Love it, love it.
Two seniors who are not here.
Yes.
They were both state placers as well and they both signed on to Wrestling College.
Yes, so we got Giselle Gallegos, she is next year going to Oxford for wrestling and Ella George going to Ellsworth Community College to wrestle as well.
Very cool.
That's fantastic.
All right, next I'm going to bring up Ty Keer with our boys swim program.
Good evening, thanks for having us. I have a couple of representatives from our boys swim and dive team. We have another senior that is not here this evening, Andrew Ritter, but I have with me Noah Offling and Joe Rosso. Couple of highlights about our season, we had every single athlete on our team letter this year. Every single athlete on our team finished the year with personal best swims at our section meet. Every single athlete had a medal at the section meet and all three of those are things that have never happened in the 10 years I've been coaching. have never happened in the 10 years I've been coaching. With our team placing sixth out of 12 at the section meet, that was a really big accomplishment because we were the smallest team there. And a couple of highlights from the two seniors we have here. Joe finished his season in the water, which was a really big accomplishment because we had to work through some health issues, but finished the season with personal bests and able to compete and contribute to the team, which was a really great accomplishment. We had Andrew Ritter compete at the state meet. He's not here today, but he competed in diving at the state competition. And on the other side of me, we have Noah Offling, who missed the state meet by less than a half a second in a couple of different events, is the third-fastest breast stroker in our school's history, and had the third-most points out of any athlete that I've had on the boys' team in the 10 years I've been coaching. So thank you for having us, and we look forward to seeing you again next year.
Thank you.
All right. And I believe this is our final program, dance. Coach Roz Wilson in our dance program.
I'm the head coach of the South St. Paul Dance Team. With me today, I have our team representatives, seniors.
Taylor Rose.
And Josie Grant. This past season, our dancers worked really hard and achieved many of the goals they set. We saw great improvement from our B squad, junior varsity and varsity teams. Our team qualified for the M A D T Academic All-State Award. Our varsity team finished second overall in our Metro East Conference this year. Our varsity kick team placed fifth at sections. And our varsity jazz team punched their ticket to state by placing second at sections for the first time since 2018. On behalf of the coaching staff and the entire team, we just want to thank you for having us here and recognizing our season. Thank you.
Hey, I don't believe I missed anybody, but again, thank you for allowing us to come. It's always incredible, even though I'm at a lot of these events and watching these things unfold, it's always kind of incredible to listen to all the accomplishments, like just be compiled into kind of one evening, to see all the wonderful things that our kids have done. Thanks again to the incredible coaches and advisors for all the work that they do. They do a tremendous job in working with these kids each and every day and helping these kids develop the skills to become successful adults, which is ultimately what we want our activities program to do, is be that addition, you know, additional bonus that just helps our kids become better people. So thanks again. Have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you.
And if it's okay, I'll just give a shout out to Brady because we just recognize all of those programs, and he's responsible for making sure those are all going in Minnesota, which is a very interesting space to do that. So, thank you, Brady.
Yes, thank you. The sports and activities that our kids participate in offer so much to enrich their education. I am so pleased to see so many kids coming up with multiple sports, multiple activities, wearing a T-shirt that says "Band," and they're up for another sport. They really participate in such a breadth of activities. That's fantastic. For our next quality in action, I'd like to recognize some of our 25-year employees. Is it the school principals who will be speaking about their...
So they do have an order, so they kind of, they're going to kind of flow, and they know which order they're going in. We're going to do, because some of them have retirees and 25 years, so when they're up, they're just going to, we're going to recognize 25 and retirees together. So Teresa Starkman will lead us off. Marty, sorry. My apologies.
Yes, hi, I'm Teresa Marty now. I'm excited to be here to celebrate two outstanding employees who have dedicated 25 years of service to South St. Paul schools. First one is Jennifer Saxhauer, and in her current role, she is my assistant principal at Lincoln Center, and I am so fortunate to get to work with her each day. She has spent her 25 years teaching at Capoja, most of it teaching at Lincoln, doing some coaching and some coordinating roles before she became the assistant principal. And I'm going to tell the fun fact about both of them at the end, because the other one is Robin Winsonson, who has spent all 25 years teaching at Lincoln Center. She started as a sixth-grade teacher and then now has been a fifth-grade teacher. And a fun fact is they both started their teaching careers together on the same team outside of South St. Paul, but then came to South St. Paul together. And so they both also live in the community. Their children have gone through schools here and graduated. And so, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good evening, School Board, Dr. Zambreno, greater school community. My name is Chuck Ochak, and I'm honored to be the principal at South St. Paul High School. We do have a couple of people I'm going to talk about. Two of them couldn't be here tonight, but I want to honor and celebrate Pete Schultz, who has been working in the district for 25 years. He's a teacher and a former coach. And the fun fact about Pete, he and his family run the Strive for Pack of Pride for the last 15 years, and they've donated close to $200,000 to help our kids pay their activity fees if they cannot pay them. So it was really cool to see all those kids that were up here. Activities are really important to the Schultz's and to Peter Schultz, and so I just want to thank him publicly for all that he does to help our kids. The second person I want to honor is Beth Bernstein, who retired. She was our district clerical for student records. When I asked her what she was going to do for fun in retirement, she has some grandkids that she was going to take care of. And then just keeping Glenn Bernstein, our former head of maintenance here at South St. Paul, busy, was on the top of her list. And then the third, this one is just an amazing, this woman is amazing. I'm going to ask Jean Watry to come up. Jean Watry, we're celebrating two things with Jean Watry, right? First is she's hit 40 years teaching, like 40 years in this community, touching kids, making sure that they know, understand math, but more importantly, making sure that they are really great people when they leave us, right? So 40 years, I didn't even do the numbers. I should have, as I'm not a math guy, right? Remember? But if you think that in 40 years, she sees 150 to 200 kids a year, like think about all the lives that have been changed and touched by Jean Watry. So when I asked Jean what was she going to do in her retirement, it was pretty funny. You said all the things you've neglected to do because you were working, like painting, gardening, and spending time with family. One of the things I really appreciate about Jean Watry is she is really loyal, like really loyal. We don't have assigned parking spots at the high school, but I have a spot, and it's next to Jean Watry, who beats me every day, and I'm not sure how that happens. But, and she lets people know that when they park next to me, or next to her, that that's actually my parking spot, even though it doesn't say anything. Right? It's just kind of a hidden joke, like, don't take that spot next to Jean Watry. So Jean, thank you for your 40 years, and I wish you the best in retirement, and I will miss you a ton. Thank you.
Want to say anything?
I just, I just want to thank this community. I absolutely love South St. Paul. It's like my home. I grew up in Adrian, Minnesota, but like you said, I've been out here for 40 years, and I, I just love this community. I say it's the best-kept secret in the metro. I was meant to be here. I can't think of another place I would have rather taught. I just want to thank all the parents out there, all of the supportive parents who sent wonderful kids to us. I love the kids. I love the parents. I love the community. So you gave me the best job I could have ever had, so thank you so much for all of those great years. I really, really appreciate it.
Awesome.
I can't tell you how many times I run into someone and they hear I'm in South St. Paul. Does Mrs. Watry still teach there? Does Ms. Watry still teach there? And I'm finally going to have to say no. So I'm like, I'm going to be disappointing people, I think, for a while now, but amazing, amazing commitment.
Good evening, School Board, Dr. Zambreno. Thanks for having us here tonight. It's always fun on the night when the kids are here because we see them as almost adults, and we remember them when they were this big, basically, running around our hallways. So that's always kind of fun, and all of these people have had such an impact on those kids who were just in this room who could not wait to leave, by the way. I don't know if you saw that. So I have three retirees this year, and first, I'm going to start with Diane Boonstra. Diane, could you step up right here? And if you don't notice, Diane looks super relaxed. She's very tan. She's just calm as can be. She retired in December, so she's got, she's got a running start at this, basically. Diane had taught for 34 years. She started at Lincoln, and then she came to Capoja four years later. She taught second through sixth grade. And then last year, we wanted to make sure that she had taught every grade. So she subbed long-term for Media Tech, and she subbed kindergarten through fifth grade, and then she did some intervention, too. And so she, very well-rounded teaching experience right up to the very end. I asked her what she wants to do, and it's things like Jean had said, working out, golfing, traveling, spending time with family, scuba diving, who knew, working with wood, woodworking, and learning new things. Once a teacher, always a teacher, playing pickleball, learning Spanish, things like that. And, you know, I threw in the scuba diving. She might be the only person I know, and I didn't know where this country was before, who has a condo now in Roatan. Do you know where Roatan is? Okay, well, look it up. It's very nice, and you'll see Diane's picture there, basically. So we want to, we want to thank Diane for her years of service and impacting the lives of so many kids at Capoja, and I'm just so glad your retirement is off to a great start. Thank you. This is for you. And now Linda Stein. Linda Stein could step up. She is one of our educational support professionals, or PARA. Linda started at Capoja 27 years ago, all at Capoja. Her fondest memory, I asked about her fondest memory, and she said, "When a sixth-grade student, they had an end-of-the-year party, and there must have been like a dance." I don't know what administrator thought having a dance for a sixth-grade party at the end of the year was a good idea, but he was so afraid that he wouldn't know how to dance. So her and a former colleague, Kathy Kidd, taught this kid how to dance every day until the party. And I'm sure he was fantastic. Yes, obviously, right? So she plans on spending more time with her family and friends, traveling, and completing her never-ending to-do list, which I hope it requires dance teaching. Okay? So Linda Stein, everybody. And Lisa Bolter, if you could please step up. She absolutely does not like this, being on camera. She has worked in education for 25 years. She has worked at Lincoln Center, at the high school, and as my right-hand person at Capoja. Her funniest memory, or one of her funniest memories, which I don't know what this means, but she really enjoyed me being in a dunk tank and getting dunked at some point. So her plans for retirement are spending more time with family and friends, traveling, working on home improvement projects, exercising, getting a part-time job. Again, these people who retire who look for jobs right away, volunteering with an organization and learning to play pickleball. And I have to leave you with this quote that she had given to me, because she is kind of the mother at Capoja, right? She sits right in the middle of the office, and everybody comes in and everybody wants to talk to Lisa. And I'd have to say to her sometimes, like, "We got stuff to do, man. You got to, let's get moving." They just keep telling me stuff. I don't know. So she is the heart and soul of that office, and I know I will miss her. But her advice is this, she wants to tell her colleagues, "To be kind to everyone. Don't let work overshadow your personal life. Take care of yourself so you can be more well-balanced and a happier person," and to support each other. And that's exactly what she did for every member at the Capoja site. So I want to thank you, Lisa, for all your time. She really wants to say a speech, doesn't she? No, she doesn't. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm Leah Borg. I'm the principal at the middle school. Thanks for having me here tonight. I'm to talk about two retirees who are not here because they are doing different retiree things. The first I have is Beth Adiani. And last summer, Beth came to me and she said, "Leah, I'm going to retire." And I was like, "Oh, okay." And I'm thinking, "What are we going to do after this school year?" And she goes, "No, I'm retiring in September." And I said, "Wait, what?" And she's like, "My birthday's in September, and I'm going to retire." And she has been off the radar since September. I got, finally got ahold of her last week, and I said, "Beth, what are you doing with your retirement?" She's traveled to Asia. She's had family from out of town. She actually lives in West St. Paul, and I imagine that I would see her every once in a while. I haven't seen her at all, a single time since she left, because she is busy. But she, she does occasionally send a text and says, "Hey, I was thinking about you." And I'll just always remember that about Beth. She is so kind and so caring. She's an amazing cook. She brought my family meals last winter when we were going through some stuff, and it would just, it meant a lot. Our second retiree at the middle school is actually retiring from the secondary, and that's Melissa Miller. She has a little bit of an unconventional retirement. I talked with her last week, and she's like, "I don't want to come. I'm not really retired." She retired from K-12 education. She is working at the state. She is raising two teenagers and a very rambunctious new dog, and she is very busy and moving around the cities a lot at hockey meets, or hockey games, sorry, and tennis meets, and she is just everywhere and always. And so she sends her love, but she is not able to join us today. So those are our two retirees from the secondary. Thank you.
Good evening, School Board, Dr. Zambreno. I'm here today to recognize Sue Nicholson. Sue is a person of very few words, but her work in the kitchen and dedication to students and others speak volumes. She is one of the first people to step up when we are short-staffed or need someone to work extra hours. She's always willing to go the extra mile to make sure meals are ready to serve to our students. As Sue moves on to the next chapter in her story, I want to, at first, say thank you for everything you do every single day to provide the students with the fuel they need to learn. And second, I simply want to say congratulations on your retirement. You will be missed by your kitchen family very much, and we all just want to wish you the best on your next adventure.
Thank you.
I'm here to honor Alyssa Kipplemeyer on her retirement. I had, I had the opportunity to supervise her for three years, but the building engineer at Capoja worked with her and supervised her for 20 years. So one of the great stories about Elsa, I'm sorry, Elsa, was she was born and raised in Ure, Ureta, Africa. As a young person, she came to the United States and received her permanent resident card while walking, working at Capoja. Elsa started at, at Capoja as a cleaner on February 11, 2003, and retired from her position in August 9 of 2023. The building engineer, Michelle Penman, shared these kind words about Elsa. Elsa was very dedicated and a hard worker that went above and beyond her, beyond to help out her coworkers. Her performance and knowledge of her job duties could be seen by the quality of her work. Capoja was very fortunate to have her. Congratulations, Elsa. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Amy Winter, the Executive Director of Educational Services, and I have the privilege to honor two individuals. Unfortunately, both of them are not here. The first one is for Jean Zender, who is a Director of Community Education and Early Learning, and she is celebrating 25 years of service here in South St. Paul. She is home ill right now. And so I am her replacement for also honoring a retiree. Jana Beck was an early learning teacher, and she retired in January, so she has already been enjoying that retirement time. And she worked here in South St. Paul for 29 years. And right now, what she is spending her time doing is traveling, spending time up at the cabin, also doing a lot of babysitting for the grandchildren, and just enjoying that family time now that she's not working. So thank you so much.
We had one retirement in our finance department this year. Lynn Welsh retired as our finance specialist. She was in the district for over 27 years, serving our community and serving our district. So grateful for all of the work that she did and wish her well in retirement.
Good evening, School Board. I'm Joel Miltier, Director of Human Resources, and it's my honor tonight to honor Linda King, who has been with the school district for 20 years. 20 years, before retiring as our HR Generalist in November of 2023. Linda is a huge asset to me in the last two and a half years that I've been in the district, helping me on the daily work of human resources throughout the district. And she was really looking forward in retirement to spending more time with her grandkids, and also traveling and spending time with her husband, who is partially retired. I thank Linda for all of her work and dedication to the district. Thank you.
Thank you all. I don't see anyone else jumping up to honor any more retirees or any more of our long-term employees. I am so impressed to see that many people having worked in our district for such a significant portion of their careers. That really shows the dedication they have to our students and our community, and that we are a great place to work and teach and just have some of the best students in the world. You've all made such an impact on the lives of our students. Every single job in the district helps our students succeed. All of our teachers, all of the support staff, we need all of these people working together, all for our students. Thank you very much for your years of service and your dedication to the South St. Paul School District. We have seen the whole breadth of student participation and long service from our teachers and other staff members. And with all of the honors wrapping up, our audience has also dwindled. But we'll move on to the rest of the business of our meeting. We would have, at this time, any notes from our public listening sessions or online comments. I have not received anything through our comments. I'd like to remind everyone that at the first meeting of the month, that is the second Monday, everyone is invited to come and make any comments to the board. Those meetings are held at the district office. Public comments period is about 6:30, and those meetings are also open to the public. And now we will highlight some of the items from our previous work sessions. I will start with a few points from our work session two weeks ago. Let's see, that would have been May 13. A few points that I wanted to share with the community is that we heard this wonderful plan from Director Winter about the pathway to Packer Promise. All of the new opportunities that are coming to our students through better connections with counseling, career planning, pathways to careers, and further education, starting in middle school, all through high school, having many new opportunities and expanded options to experience careers and train for the jobs that our students are asking for. This is all based on what we've heard from our students, really wanting to have that exposure to the art of the trades and more classes in computer programming. It's really interesting, the breadth of classes that will be offered in the coming years, and the new programming in our elementary schools to really highlight STEM education, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, bringing those subjects more to the forefront in our elementary education is something else we've heard the desire for, and a talent development program where all of our students have a myriad of talents. And by finding what those talents are and giving them the chance to develop the skills that they need and really shine in their specialties, I think will be a great opportunity for our elementary school students as well. And then we heard an update about the Core Values partnership with the city, and we will be rolling this out over the course of the summer. And just wanted to highlight that the core values that we really show here and are demonstrated by the students and teachers and staff that were honored tonight are pride, respect, equity, resilience, integrity, and collaboration. And you'll be hearing more about all these core values over the coming year and into the future. And then finally, we heard a report from a committee formed to advise the board on renaming our stadium at Ettinger Field after Jim Carter. And a committee report was made available in our agenda. If you look back on our board documents, you'll find that report. And after some discussion among board members and comments from members of that committee and family members, we decided to table that discussion, and that proposal was later retracted. So that was the work session from two weeks ago. And to give me a break, Director Hume is going to recap a few highlights from tonight's work session.
This evening, we met at 5 o'clock before the business meeting. I guess the most exciting part was we were able to acknowledge the work that Renata and Louise had done as our student school board reps. So an opportunity, again, to thank you for the perspectives that you brought to the board and for just kind of opening up for us how our actions truly affect what happens in the schools. It's been a privilege having you with us. And we also got to meet Amal, and Jackson wasn't at the meeting, but I assume that I'll be excited to meet you one-on-one. But to celebrate, our new student reps who've been chosen through an interview process, who will be officially starting with us in September in the new school year, and we had some treats to enjoy that time. We also learned about sports co-op programming from Brady Krueger. We're looking at joining a co-op for our swim program so that we can continue offering all of the athletics and activities that our students want to be engaged in at a level where they can be competitive and getting the kind of development and support that they need as our program gets smaller. And a brief update from Joel Miltier regarding things that will come up later in our agenda. That's it.
Thank you very much. Let's see, next, Dr. Zembrino will provide some updates from around the district.
Yes, thank you. It's, we keep saying it as we get into the spring, like, what an exciting time it is. And we sure have had a lot of great memories and great activities to wrap up the school year. Hard to believe this is our last official business meeting. We do have an important one next month where we'll wrap up our budget, but as the kids and some of our staff step away, it's been a wonderful year. And I'll talk about some of the highlights after just kind of our usual check-in. So very excited about the Help Me app. And so Dr. Burkhart, Lisa Branddecker, others, our principals, a number of us really working behind the scenes to get this up and started. We debated if we should start it this spring, knowing it's close to the end of the year, but really glad we did. One, because we've had a few things reported to us where we were able to really reach in and offer some support to folks in need. But want to just make sure that everyone knows there's this app exists, and you can get it really easily on your phone. You can access it through the web. But what it allows people to do is make anonymous reports, whether it's, they hear, you know, if a student thinks two kids are gonna get in a fight, and they want our staff to know. And they don't want to tattle, and they don't want to, but here's a safe way to just say, "Hey, you may want to check in with these." You know, we had somebody who was concerned about the welfare of another student make a report. And so a really powerful tool, and we're learning about it, but just want to make sure everyone else is aware of that. And I really do hope our students and families, and even our staff, if they weren't sure about how to report something, please use it. Let us know, and we'll get a channel to the right individual, whether that's a social worker, an administrator, or otherwise. And we are monitoring those. It's one of those where if there's something serious enough, they will call me on my cell phone if it's at night or on the weekend. But most things would wait till the next school day, like, something happens, you know. We deal with that a lot. Something happens on social media, we hear about it, we deal with it. But we're really hoping this gives us a proactive tool to kind of keep our finger on the pulse. Mentioned the end of the year. Our graduation ceremony is right around the corner. So our CLC is on June 4 at 6, and that one happens in the auditorium. It's always a really fun event there with the CLC kids. And then the big graduation out on the field on the 6th at 7. So we have had a lot of rain, which tells me that we've gotten all the rain out of the system, so that Ettinger Field will be dry and lovely for graduation, and the grass will be as green and thick as it's ever been. So really excited about that, especially as I've gotten to be here longer and getting to know the kids. I'm looking at one across the room from me who I want to be pretty sad to see and yet happy to see come across that stage. So really, really fun. And that'll be livestreamed for those who can't make it and available on Town Square TV. Some other highlights around the district, I mean, this is just unbelievable. We saw our amazing kids. We heard it stated earlier about how we have the best kids. And it's exactly what I said to the group of kids. I mean, we have amazing, amazing kids who do the right thing time and time again. And what a great gift this community gives back to its seniors. We had 140 graduating seniors receive scholarships totaling $477,250. I know a lot of us have heard that number, but when you tell that number to people outside of South St. Paul, they're like, "Wait, what?" So really, so appreciative of our donors and others who make that possible, and of course, the staff at the foundation. Great night, and just, it's a fun night as it builds, the value builds. And I was sitting across from Andrew Bonk, watching the look on his face as his name kept not getting called. And then we get to the big ones, and so it's a, it's a big night. In any amount, the research is clear that just getting a kid out of the starting gate in post-secondary at any amount can really make a transformative impact on their life. We had, let's see, sorry, skipped a slide on mine. The, just again, all the amazing successes of our students. So we had athletic awards. Middle school started honor roll ceremonies this year, which is great to celebrate the kids' academics. We've had academic awards for IB diploma, IB honor students, NHS, bilingual seal and multilingual seal, which I think is so powerful because it honors our native speakers of multiple languages, that they get something on theirs. I know my daughter got a platinum seal, which I guess is a big deal for her French work. So for any kid, it's a real big deal. And then we had a number of kids signing their commitment letters for collegiate athletes. We heard a little bit about some of that with our athletes in the room today. We had an elementary track meet, which was, we were a little nervous about. That was the morning, if everyone remembers, it was very smoky, but we got the clear because it was like, okay, the air's gonna clear through the day. And then we just didn't have them run the long mile run, but the kids had such a blast. And here, like, what I love seeing is just encouragement for students who are uniquely able, or differently able, to get such support and cheering from their peers and staff, and then our older students who come down and volunteer, and our mentors for our fourth and fifth graders. So I got to stop over there, and it was a lot of fun. But as we're ending the year, you know, I definitely wanted to pause and say thank you to everyone, our incredible staff. For those of you who hear me talk about things like this, I struggle to want to call things out, because anytime you do, you missed, you didn't say something. So know that if I don't say something, it's all appreciated because it is a culmination of everybody's work. But we've had some really great highlights this year. I mean, we saw the coaches and advisors and the impact they've had on our kids. Our teachers and principals have carried a heavy lift around academics. We heard about the pathway to Packer Promise and really starting to think about where do we want our kids to end when they leave us. But building a stronger foundation with the elementary literacy curriculum, our elementary teachers have worked so hard this year, and the rigor and the level of thinking and discussion and just critical thinking that's happening is just gonna be felt for years as our kids matriculate through our system. Our lunch staff, we had universal free lunch this year, so they served more. We had a great presentation a few meetings ago from Dory, who was here tonight, and Maggie. I mean, it was hundreds of thousands of meals they served, and I think food is love, so to serve that many meals is to serve a lot of love. Our buildings and grounds, we have a facilities task force going right now, but our buildings are aging, but you can hardly tell because they're so well-maintained. Our clerical staff have been created welcoming offices all year, and all those end-of-year activities are just lots of extra work. Our ESPs, our security staff, who give so much every day, they're like the glue that holds the place together because teachers are in front of the class. Who can help me with this situation? When they phone a friend, like, I'm looking at one of the friends right over there who responds all the time with Bridget. Let's see, we did a ton with our safety work, so we brought in "I love you guys" and really ramped up our safety protocols. And the fruit of it is really clear. We did have a fire drill, fire alarm went off at the high school. I was at a job fair, got the call, like, "Hey, can you come back?" When I got here, Chief Wiki was like, "Wow." He's like, "What have you guys done?" Because the guy pulled up, everybody was lined up, like, every 20 people. There was someone with the folder. It's like, "I've never seen it so well organized." So shout out to all of our staff who worked to make that happen. On June 11, we're gonna do the last kind of major training, which is a reunification training. We're gonna bring 75 of us about down to Veterans Memorial Community Center, where we would use, if we ever needed to, take kids to be re-unified with their parents. That's where we'll do it. We're gonna do the training on-site. So super excited about that work. Stakeholder engagement, I know the board has heard this a lot from me, but how much I value stakeholder engagement and consultative decision-making. But it's been so fun to see our families in the school. So we had musicals recently at the elementaries. They were just packed. And we know all the other activities they've been at. Tina Moses started a new technology committee and is going really deep with technology. She also brought in all kinds of technology for our teachers to try and sample and vote on what technology they'd like to see in their classrooms. Dr. Burkhart's Special Education Advisory Committee, they had like over 100 people attending, I think, the meeting last week. I don't remember the exact number, but I'm close. So amazing to take kids who might be other eyes and elevate them up. Staff and family academic advisory committee, so they've been leaning in to help us on the pathways. We have a calendar committee, a facilities task force, so you can get the idea here. We're trying hard to get a lot of people. And next year, I'm excited because we're gonna continue into some strategic planning. So we've talked about our core values. We have our desired daily experience, but what are the other pieces we need to really flesh out our strategic plan? So I like to say we're a small but mighty district on the move because I truly believe that. Again, there's no way I could think of everything because there's so many people who make so many contributions, our board as well, Lisa who helps me, and my other teams. It's just, it's a great place to be a part of. It's been an honor to work alongside of everybody this year, and excited to see where we go with, as we keep the pedal to the metal. And then just some dates to remember. Like I said, coming up on the end of school, June 6 is our last day. June 17 will be our first day of summer learning, so we do love to keep the learning going in the summer, and make it fun, too. So learning and some fun. And then Juneteenth is June 19, so just a reminder, that is a district holiday, and all buildings will be closed. And then, as always, you can keep track of everything on our website. Our team does a great job of keeping everything updated. But again, just a shout out and thank you to our staff, our students, our families, the broader community for really making 2324 a very successful school year. Thank you.
Thank you. We are wrapping up a great school year. But on with our agenda for the evening. Our consent agenda items are next. These are financial claims, staffing, and other personnel issues. They've been presented in the board packet. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved. Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And we have a number of policies before the board tonight for their third and final reading. These policies have been brought forward to us through the policy committee and have been reviewed at two previous board meetings. There is quite a list here. Policy 102, equal opportunity. Policy 104, school district mission statement. 403, discipline suspension and dismissal of school district employees. 404, employee background checks. 413, harassment and violence. 474, staff information technology acceptable use policy. 501, school weapon policy. 502, search of student lockers, desks, personal possessions, and students' person. 504, student appearance. 505, distribution of non-school-sponsored materials on school premises by students and employees. 512, school-sponsored student publications and activities. 514, bullying. 515, protection and privacy of pupil records. 516.5, overdose medication. 518, DNR, DNI orders. 520, student surveys and form. 521, student disability nondiscrimination. 526, hazing prohibition. 528, student parental, family, and marital status nondiscrimination. 528, student parental, family and marital status nondiscrimination. 530, immunization requirements. 531, the pledge of allegiance. 536, student information technology acceptable use policy. 550, attendance at state tournaments. 611, homeschooling. 613, graduation requirements. And 706, acceptance of gifts. Is there a motion to approve those listed policies?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to mention, it was a huge list that you just read off. All of these policies are available on the website if you're curious and also in the various school handbooks. It seems like so many of them are coming up because we want to make sure we review them in time for the next school year to prepare. So nothing major has happened in our world. We're not responding to some kind of crisis. This is a very standard review process.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. The policies are approved. Next we'll have some HR updates. First, is there a motion to approve the non-renewal of long-term and limited contract substitute teachers? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And for discussion, I'll turn over to Joel Miltier.
Great, thank you very much. As mentioned in previous board meetings, this is the time of year, excuse me, where we are non-renewing teachers for the 2425 school year. So we do have two more teacher names to bring forward to you from probationary staff members that we are non-renewing for the next school year and we're looking for the board's approval this evening on those non-renewals.
Any further discussion? Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Lala Burdi?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
Human?
Yes.
And Claflin?
Yes.
That's six yeas.
Thank you. And now similarly, I'm looking for approval of the South St. Paul School Board, our approval of the 2024 and 25 continuance of teacher contracts. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
And for a discussion explanation, I'll hand it back to Joel Miltier.
Thank you. As part of our annual staffing process, administration identifies probationary teachers to retain and those who will be granted tenure for the coming school year. As a result, the attached document reflects probationary teachers who are recommended to be retained and probationary teachers who would be granted tenure for the 2425 school year. We're looking for the school board's approval of this recommendation.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Up next, we have approval of the Education Identity and Access Management Board Resolution that designates Dr. Brian Zambrino as the Identified Official with Authority for Education Identity Access Management for South St. Paul Public Schools. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
And again, for discussion, I'll hand it back to Joel Miltier.
That's fine. It's me, that's fine. Well, if you didn't approve it, we were all going to have much less work to do, but we'll get back to work. Thank you for approving that. That allows us to go into the state systems and identify who's responsible for the various buckets of work. And so that's what they call that, the EDI AMR, however. This one's Iowa, sorry, there's two of them. But anyway, approving that will allow us to keep the work moving.
Any further discussion? Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Lala Burdi?
Yes.
T Felton?
Yes.
Human?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
And Claflin?
Yes.
That's six yeas. Chair Claflin, we have one human resource item that we're going to move to. It's the probationary teachers. So it'd be item A listed on that agenda.
I thought I had that one. Oh, I missed one. So we're looking for approval of a resolution relating to the non-renewal of probationary teachers. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And again, Joel Miltier.
Great, thank you very much. This is for the non-renewal of long-term limited contract substitute teachers in compliance with Minnesota statutes for required to terminate the teaching contracts of the district's long-term limited contract substitute teachers at the end of each school year. A long-term substitute by definition is one who worked all or part of the school year, replacing a specific teacher who has returned rights to his or her position. The contracts of the long-term substitutes must be terminated at the end of the school year. Failure to terminate these contracts could result in the district allocating two teachers to a position for the next school year. Attached is a resolution to non-renew teaching contracts for the district's long-term limited contract substitute teachers.
Have we gotten our resolutions crossed? If that was long-term limited substitutes?
Yep, I just, yep.
Okay. So we are looking for the motion on non-renewal of limited contract substitute teachers, correct?
Yes.
All right. And that's a resolution, so if there's no further discussion, Lisa, would you call the roll?
Director T Felton?
Yes.
Human?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
W Felton?
Yes.
Lala Burdi?
Yes.
And Claflin?
Yes.
That's six yeas.
Thank you very much.
Lots of pieces of HR formalities to keep track of there. All right. Yep. I have a script. I just have to follow it. So next up, I am looking for approval of the 2024 through 2027 Teacher Development and Evaluation Plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And for further discussion, I'd like to invite Dr. Winter to...
Thank you so much. We thought we'd give you a brief little presentation here to talk to you about just a lot of the work that we've done this year around our TDE plan. Tiffany Bryan is going to do the presentation and I will just tell you personally, she has done amazing work behind the scenes in bridging together a whole bunch of stakeholders from administration, from teachers, from my department, and just really trying to honor the work that we do and how do we support our staff and what does that plan look like? And so I'm really excited around the work that is now this fourth edition and again, hoping that you'll get a background of the plan and ask any questions before you have to vote on it.
I will attempt, Mrs. Moore? I will attempt to be as entertaining as all of the wonderful quality and action things that you've experienced tonight. So our TDE plan is steered by the committee that you see on the screen before you. Every three years, this group, this committees, which is both teaching staff and administrators, they revisit this plan to see if changes need to be made. The plan in general outlines all of the requirements that our educators are evaluated by, anybody on the teaching contract. So the changes that I am bringing to you today have been vetted and discussed and approved by all of the staff that you see on the screen before you. And I do want to mention Amy Winter, Jen Saxhour and Connor Murphy as union president in thanking them for all of the extra time that they put in this year helping to rewrite this plan as well. So we start with the why. We want to make sure that everything we do goes back to our daily desired experience. And our staff members, their why, one of their daily desired experiences is that they are provided with what they need to succeed, which ultimately reaches the experience that our students desire, that they have a fun, engaging and challenging and supportive learning environment. And I think our plan as rewritten does that. So I've arranged it according to goal, which made sense in my mind and hopefully it makes sense to you as well. So let's start with our first goal. Our first goal is to maintain compliance with MDE guidelines and statute, of course. So you'll notice that statute requires that we, our evaluative rubrics are all making or accounting for cultural competency. So we've used as our rubric for the past at least 10 years, we've used Charlotte Danielson. The change that we are proposing is to use Danielson's Updated Framework for Teaching. The district has already decided that they want to use this and the good news for our plan is that now it makes sure that we are maintaining that compliance. Because we updated that language, we could remove Appendix B domain, which was a domain five. It was a tack on that our district made to the original framework so that we knew that we were accounting for that cultural competency. The second two, PLC and Student Learning Goals, these both have to do with statute that requires that 35% of our teacher evaluation is student learning and achievement. So in the past, that 35%, we used PLCs to account for that. It was in the part two of our plan, the Impact on Student Learning and Achievement. We've moved, oh yes.
Can you define PLC?
Oh yes, thank you. PLCs are professional learning communities. So these are things that our teachers have done in the past, will continue to do where they do really cool research, honestly, and try new things to improve their practice. So new MDE guidelines, note that yes, PLCs are good and they are teacher practice, they are not this impact on student and teaching, excuse me, student learning and achievement. So we've moved it from the 35% to that part one, our teacher practice. It is no longer part of the final performance rating that our teachers receive at the end of their cycle of performance. So we've updated that, including a definition to add some guiding questions to help those professional learning communities strengthen. Then that meant that we still had these student learning goals that we needed to account for, that 35%. And so in the past, this was optional, fortunately was already there, now it is required. So again, not a new practice, just a slight shift in our practice. So those three goals all account for, those three changes account for that first goal. Our second goal is of course to support teacher growth and development. One thing that we realized as we were really digging into our plan is that we were heavy in outlining or outlaying, excuse me, laying out the evaluation, not so much in the growth and support that we have for our teachers, which we know is plentiful. So the fourth thing that we did here is to define a summative evaluator. We added that to ensure that yearly training occurs. Of course, we have wanted this, but we wanted to make sure that it was ensured. Could you afford one slide? I think I do have figure. Perfect. The next one was to add this figure, our educator growth and development. All of the things that you see on this figure are already present in our district. Mentors, peer coaches like myself, over on professional development, the PLCs, those communities, peer review, all of these things have been happening, we just didn't lay it out in our plan. And so we wanted to have it laid out in our plan so that we could make it clear of what the support was that we were offering. Once we had this big overview, this big picture view of what we were providing support for our teachers, that opened up a new window for us. If you could go forward a slide, please. That's when we realized, and there's a lot of writing on here that I'll focus on the right-hand side, that's when we realized that we wanted to rewrite specifically this process. This process answers the question, what do we do when a teacher is not meeting expectations? In the past, we called this process the Performance Assistance Plan. We've changed the name to distance it from, as you can see, the abbreviation, the PIP, the Performance Improvement Plan. That's part of HR. It's very different from our Performance Assistance Plan. And so we wanted to change the name just to make that really clear. Also, again, looking at the right-hand side, you can see this unsatisfactory rating in the teacher practice score. We wanted to be more clear about how do we know when a teacher isn't meeting expectations? In fact, our evaluators, our administrators were the ones who were asking for our committee to consider that. So we looked at what might be most doable and make most sense for our plan. And the teacher practice score tallies all of their observations from years one through three. So there's opportunity for our teachers to improve and opportunities for us to provide them with support. Further down, you can see we added some details regarding what that support might actually look like. We entailed it or detailed it in activities and goals. We added a layer of how do we know when they are successful? You can see underlined, in the past, it was determined only by a peer coach. We added that the Department of Educational Services would also have a staff member. Next slide, please. When a teacher, we wanted to clarify, when a teacher was not successful in Level One, in the past, they might repeat Level One, perhaps even indefinitely. We wanted to have a clear process and a clear journey for this. So we've changed it so that if you're not successful at Level One, you would then move to Level Two. And at the end of both of those two levels, at any point if you are successful, you are removed from the process and you rejoin the plan as usual. But if at that point you still have not achieved the success that we are hoping for, that's when either termination or just discipline would be required. And that is a statute requirement as well. Everything else there is removed just because it doesn't actually account for it or to, again, simplify, we wanted to make sure you're going from Level One to Level Two, hopefully back into our regular plan, but if so, we knew what we needed to do. We're halfway there. The biggest change, I think, for our plan is in our minimum number of observations. So I want to point out first, the pink boxes, these are boxes in which we have eliminated an observation and here's why. Our probationary teachers were receiving five observations from their evaluator, one observation from a peer coach, and then three observations from a job-alike mentor. For example, a first grade teacher has another first grade teacher observing them. So that was nine observations in under nine months. So in trying to support our probationary teachers, we really realized we were actually kind of over-supporting them and perhaps be more of a burden and a stressor than a support. So we removed two informal observations from their, from their requirements, noting that they are still receiving three observations from their evaluator at minimum. They can always choose to do more. They will receive the peer coach observations. The box in red is really emphasizing, this hasn't always been happening in recent years with our peer coach capacity. And so we wanted to maintain that that red box, that that one peer coach observation was happening. So we were boosting the support and shifting those informal observations. If we go to the next slide, please. We shifted those informal observations to our continuing contract teachers. We did this for two reasons. One, our teachers want administrators in their classrooms. They've said this numerous times in numerous ways, that they want to get that feedback from their teachers. And in the past, excuse me, from their administrators, in the past, their administrators were only in their classrooms in Year Three. So we shifted it so that way they could get observations in Year One and Year Two. The second reason that this was really helpful for us is that there's also a statute that requires that we provide longitudinal data for student engagement. We've been doing that by self-reporting as teachers and shifting the informal observations means that our admin can collect that and it makes that data a little more robust. We also reduced the other pink box, the peer coach observation for cycle Year Three. That was two peer coach observations, we've reduced that to one, again, to make sure that those peer coaches have the capacity to meet the needs and support our probationary. I know that's a lot, especially on observations. Are there any questions about the observation, the minimum number of observations?
Question?
Yeah.
How long are the observations?
Excellent question, thank you. Your informal observations are 10 to 15 minutes. They're almost like a drop-in, a principal might drop in on a teacher at any time for those 10 to 15-minute informals. A formal observation has a pre-observation meeting between the administrator and the teacher, a full class period. So at the secondary class period, at the elementary, it might be a full literacy block. So it could be from 30 minutes to an hour. And then a formal observation also includes a post-observation meeting and the peer coaches follow that formal observation as well. Other questions about the observations?
Does the state have a minimum amount and then we're going beyond that?
We were beyond that. We were beyond that. Now we are meeting those observation amounts. Excellent. If you could go forward a slide, please. My last two goals are kind of, they're the easier ones. Our third goal, we just wanted to simply update our plan to reflect district changes, especially with the sunsetting of NYPD and the addition of, as you can see, the E&amp;I coaches. We've already, always had due process leads. These are coaches that support our special educators. We wanted to add them to the plan so they could better support our teachers. The third point there, we are maintaining that the peer coaches are the only coaches who complete the peer reviews associated with this plan. So we wanted to keep that tight and consistent amongst that. And then our fourth goal was to simply ensure that the language is clear, expansive, as our next rewrite's in three years, we want it to be able to move with the moves of the district, and user-friendly, which it wasn't necessarily so in the past. So there was that peer coach definition that is applied here, too. We removed Appendix C, which is the my job coordinator description. We did that because the, there's also a description of my position in the ATPPS plan. You may remember Jen Saxauer presenting that to you a year ago. There's also that job description there. They didn't quite align, the ATPPS plan funds my position, so it just made sense to keep it in one spot, and that was the other plan. We removed, of course, that redundant, non-applicable language, and the language arts teacher and me made sure that all of the appendices, tables, and figures, all of that was aligned. Which brings us to, and I think, I'll skip over that part. This was my mini summary summary. This is really what it brings us to. The ultimate goal of this plan is to support our teachers, and we do believe that if we support our teachers in giving them what they need, that they can ultimately then give our students what they need, and that's why we are all here. Do you have any other questions? I know it's a lot of information, it's a 28-page document.
And what I would maybe summarize, and
Thank you.
Yeah. The big takeaway is I was really excited that we had alignment across of teachers, administrators, and the Educational Service Department on agreement on a plan on how to support teachers. And in some of the documents, what you will see is, we want to support, we don't want to be punitive. So we realize that as teachers are coming out of colleges, they're not necessarily ready to go to run a classroom without support. And so this plan is designed to support them as they are also learning how to improve their skills as a teacher. And so we just did a lot of cleanup and also balanced, like, what are the needs of teachers and what are the available resources? We realize we don't have endless resources, and we can't sustain certain models. So we really wanted to work smarter with this plan, and we're actually really proud of it.
Do you have any other questions for me?
Thank you for the work that you did. I looked through the, I thought it was more than 28 pages, but it did read, like, it made sense to me, and I didn't know what I was getting into when I opened it, so good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for the discussion.
Do you need anything from us to approve this, or is this just all for information?
I believe you do have to vote on it.
Yeah, so there was a motion to put this on the table, so no shall ask if there's, yeah.
So state statute requires, like, there's one of two options. Either you have a locally agreed-upon teacher evaluation tool, or you end up defaulting to what the state says you have to do in statute. So years ago, and you heard, like, the 35% of your evaluation needs to be tied to student performance. So that's why it's so complex, because there's a piece of legislation that said, make 35% evaluation this. There's a state statute that says you have to be observed in a full observation. One example is, within the first 90 days of employment, a probationary teacher needs to be observed. So there's like, this one here, this one here, this one, and I think that's what kind of leads to a lot of the complexity. And then there's the layers of support, like, who can do it? So an administrator can do a formal evaluation, meaning this could have an impact on your employment, right? You heard about probationary teachers that may not have made it through that, whereas we also have other layers of support, peer level, where it wouldn't be evaluative. So it just, it's a lot of moving parts and pieces that come together because of statute, because of our own beliefs, and like, as Amy said, our belief in supporting teachers, because it's a super-complex job, and the training programs, I went through, and it's not enough to be successful. So it really is about how do we set people up for success, but it is not without its complexity. So the good news is, it's a three-year plan, so if you approve it, we don't have to come back to this for a little while, and it'll be a really tight plan with great people behind it.
Thank you. That sounds like a lot of clarity for what teachers want to know, and how are we being evaluated, doing our jobs? How can we support teachers in their own developments, and making sure that all of that's balanced with our capacity? So if there's no further discussion, further questions? All in favor of approving the Teacher Development and Evaluation Plan, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a plan.
I think that the support that we give our teachers on the front end will lead to, like, in 25, 30 years, right? We'll see so many more people who retire with, like, the huge longevity. We'll maintain that.
I like that.
Yes. Yes, we want to keep our teachers here in the district. All right. Next, we are looking for approval of a resolution authorizing immediate, intermediate school District 917's Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Program budget, and authorizing the inclusion of proportionate share of those projects in the district's application for long-term facility maintenance revenue. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. And to explain all this, I'll turn it over to Brady Hoffman.
Good evening. So this is an annual resolution that comes to the School Board. Long-term facility maintenance funding is a revenue stream that districts and intermediates can access to help maintain the deferred maintenance needs of their buildings. As an intermediate district, they don't have their own tax base, they're a member consortium of districts, so in order for them to access this revenue, each member district needs to approve their proportionate share of that amount, which then our taxpayers will pay that portion, and then we return those funds over to the intermediate to do those projects. Just for a little bit of context, and how the timeline works, so the 10-year plan, the LTFM plan that's being approved right now, we're approving in calendar year 2024. It becomes taxes that our residents would pay in 2025. So this is actually their revenue for the '25-'26 school year. So the way the levy cycle works is it's a multi-year phase. So this is for their '25-'26 budget. Their proposed amount is $255,500, where our share of that would be $11,318, based on the calculation of how these costs are distributed. Just for a little bit of perspective, too, so for the current year, right now, the cost for our residents was $7,690 across our whole tax base of $14.8 million in tax dollars that were levied. So it's a very small fraction of a percent that is a flow-through for this funding, which allows the intermediate to take care of some of the deferred maintenance needs, just like we have. So it's a great tool for them to access as well. So this is just, like I said, it's an annual piece that comes through, where once the School Board authorizes this, we return this back to the intermediate, and then they're able to access these funds to maintain their buildings. So later in June, we'll be bringing our own LTFM plan for you to consider for approval, which would then give us that same access to those long-term facility deferred maintenance dollars. So I'll open up for questions on this, but this is an annual thing that our School Board typically approves to make sure our intermediate has access to these funds as well.
Say, Brady, do you know why their budget increased so significantly?
It's, I think it's the timing of the projects they have. So the details in this budget is, the main piece, $185,000, is to replace four HVAC units. So I'm thinking as they try and stay around that threshold, but they just might have had the timing of when these projects are needed to get addressed, to tackle them when they can, as opposed to when they fail, and then we have to, they have to get more creative, I guess. So it was a slight increase from 173 to 255.
Any further discussion? Let's see. Not a resolution, so
It is a resolution.
Oh, it is, it is a resolution. That was the wrong one.
Just a lot of words in that.
You just have to follow the script and stay on it. So Lisa, would you please call the roll?
Director Lala Burdi.
Yes.
T Felton.
Yes.
Human.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
W Felton.
Yes.
And Claflin.
Yes.
That's six yeas.
Thank you. Glad we had a finance director to have those numbers tip your tongue. And for the last item on the business agenda, I'm looking for a motion to approve the acceptance of the gifts report.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And again, for discussion, I'll turn over to Mr. Hoffman.
Good evening. We have a few donations to, for the board to consider this evening. One of those is a 3M volunteer match on behalf of Becky Williams for Lincoln Center. We have two donations to the CDLU from HLT Heating and Cooling and Mendoza Navarro LLC. The South St. Paul Education Foundation made a couple donations to the elementary schools for pottery wheels and their clay programs. The South St. Paul Open Foundation has made a donation for the dance line to support coaching salaries. And then Volkswagen of Inver Grove has made a donation to the senior all-night party.
It's great to see the community coming out to support our school district, all of our schools. Is there any further discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so then the motion passes. All right. We are almost to the end, and almost. I'd really like to recognize the patience of our student board representatives, both from this past year, Renata Awadala, and our upcoming student representatives, Jackson Schultz and Amal Fekak. You've made it through a marathon meeting. And as this is Renata's final meeting as our student representative, I'd really like to just recognize how important it has been for us to hear student voices through you. You have been absolutely instrumental in engaging with other students and helping us hear our student voices. We've been able to send you back to the schools with questions, to talk to your peers, and report back on what is the voice of the student body. And I'm really looking forward to that continuing. It informs and grounds the work of the board in what really matters most and how it impacts our students' daily experiences. From all of the interviews we did in the past year, and for the student representatives for this upcoming year, we have some amazing students, and they all have the interest of their peers at the forefront. The ideas that we heard in the interviews from Amal and from Jackson on just the connections you have to the diversity of our student body has really been helpful for us to know what the students are engaged in, what matters in their daily lives, how school is helping them, how the activities and sports that you participate in are shaping your lives and enriching your educational experience, and what we as a board can do to support that. A lot of what we do is very formal, approval of long-term facility maintenance budgets, and while it's very important, that seems disconnected from the daily experiences of our students. And it helps remind us what we are actually here to do. So I'd really like to thank you for your service, and welcome, Amal and Jackson. We'll swear you in formally in the fall, and if any of the other board members
I actually have an update for you guys.
Oh, yes. So I have an update from Renata.
So BPO is actually going on a field trip tomorrow to the Science Museum. I don't know if you remember. Last year, we went to the art museum in St. Paul, I believe. So we had a lot of touching issues at the art museum, so we couldn't do that anymore. So that's why we're going to the Science Museum. So we requested to go to the Science Museum because we loved touching a few things that we shouldn't have touched, but that's something BPO is doing tomorrow. Women's Society is actually closing off on Thursday, we're having our last meeting, our pizza party meeting. Yeah, and I just want to thank everyone to bring me along. I know it was, it was a great first year, I learned a lot, and I just appreciate you guys for taking me along on the ride, and yeah, so, thank you. And you have great people next to me that are going to step in my shoes, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Yeah, I shared it in our closer, I mean, our work session earlier, but Renata, you've made a huge impact on this community and this district, and on me personally, so thank you for that. And I'm excited to get to know Jackson and Amal better. I've gotten little snippets, but I know you two are very intelligent and capable people, and honestly, sometimes when you're sitting there going, I don't know what they're talking about, there's probably other people. So that'll be a good reminder for us of, like, can you say that a different way? So, because if you don't get it, some of us may not get it right, so it's a really good piece there. But so important to have that student voice, because we like to think we're making good decisions, but if you tell us we're off track, we're probably going to go, okay, we need to rethink this, because you, you know, kids are always insightful and candid, and so your voice matters so much. So Amal and Jackson, welcome. And again, we'll do a formal thing, but we just wanted to get you here in front of the community so they could see who's coming in to fill the shoes, and I know you'll do great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, if there's any reports from our other board members on where you've seen a passion or participated in activities with the schools? We've done our committee updates already during our work session. So if, we'll start with Director Weber.
Not much, just looking forward to graduation. It's always a fun time, both with the CLC and with the secondary, and just best wishes as you continue on your journeys, and know that there is, there are no wrong paths, there are just different ways of getting places. So best of luck.
Good advice.
Director Lala Burdi.
I have nothing at this time.
Director Human.
I, too, am looking forward to being able to go to graduation and seeing faces that we've been celebrating all throughout the year. I had the opportunity to go to music concerts at Capoja for the 2nd and 4th graders, and that was super fun. I didn't know what to expect for recorders, and it went, okay. Good job. I also really enjoyed the middle school play, it was a couple weekends ago, The Puffs. My son declared it the best play he's ever seen. So I think that's indicative of the passion that we're seeing in our district. Excited about that.
Director Felton.
First, I have a couple little thank-you things I'd like to say. I'd like to thank the Capoja Education Center. I want to thank them, they did their Apex Fund Run fundraiser. I want to thank all those that did the running and all the volunteers that helped on that program. And also, just a reminder to the Lincoln Center students, their yearbooks are there now. So if you've ordered a yearbook, you can collect it and be really proud of having that of your school. And I also attended the Athletics and Activities Celebration, and of course, the Education Foundation Scholarship Program certainly was there as I serve on the Foundation Board. And just two things on, more on a personal level. I am a South St. Paul graduate, as you know, and believe it or not, I am, on the committee, we are starting to plan our 50th class reunion, which will be held next year. So if there are any members watching this program that would like to serve on our committee, I am holding a meeting this Thursday night at my, in my apartment building. You can reach out and contact me if you would be interested in learning about our class reunion. And the last thing, as you know, I do serve on the Senior Center Board of Directors, and I know you've heard me mention a few times that I also, when we have our, our annual, well, actually, it's biannual thing here, I will show you, when we do our modeling day. I was totally surprised, I did not expect this, but I found out that our picture was posted on the community I did not expect this, but I found out that our picture was posted on the community ad brochure here that you've seen. So I'm on there, and that shirt that I have on, I did buy it. So it was a lot of fun, and as you know, our next fashion show is the first Wednesday in October. So it is a lot of fun. So thank you.
Director Felton.
Just would like to remind everybody about the 50th anniversary of the South St. Paul Open Golf Tournament, which will be July 15th at Southview Country Club. In the honoree is Mr. Randy Bjorklund, a very well-deserving honoree, longtime coach and teacher here in South St. Paul.
Thank you. I was recently at the third-grade music concert at Capoja and was also very impressed by the students. The singing and dancing was a lot of fun to watch, and the turnout from families was wonderful to see. In the middle of the afternoon, it's not the easiest time for all of us to head over to the elementary school to watch them perform for about 30 minutes or so, but they had a great turnout. So thank you for giving them an audience and showing them that we all come and support their education. All of the songs were wonderful, and in multiple languages, too. And I was also at the middle school theater production. It looked like every student was having the best time up there on stage. They were having so much fun. I loved seeing that. And they did great accents for a middle school production. They had some fantastic accents, and I really have to hand it to the senior high theater students who showed up for the middle school theater production. They cheered the loudest, participated in the play, and really showed those middle school students what a future in the theater department can look like. And I was also observing the Long-Term Facilities Task Force, and there was 680 years of cumulative experience within the school district, represented by the 25 to 30 or so people that were at that meeting. Really covered a breadth of our district, students, parents, teachers, folks that were in athletics and activities. So figuring out how we best use the resources that we have moving forward, we're looking for all of that community input. So we are finished with the public portion of our meeting tonight. We do have a closed session on our agenda. So pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03, this is to discuss independent employee negotiations, I'm looking for a motion to move us into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. The motion passes. Our public meeting is concluded. The board will move across the hall for the closed session.